Had to get the tape recorder on. Can you hear that? Okay. All right. Sorry, just want to make sure everybody can hear us this evening. Now, call this January 11th, 1999, first meeting of the year, city council meeting to order. Welcome all those of y'all in the audience and those watching via HCTV to tonight's meeting. First item on tonight's agenda is our invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Our invocation is even to be given by council member Gene Henslerling, followed immediately by the invocation, or by the pledge of allegiance, I apologize. If you would please all stand at this time.
Let's pray. Dear my father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight to do the affairs of the city. We pray that we would conduct ourselves in a professional and an honorable way. We thank you for your many blessings upon the city this past year, Father God, and we ask that you would watch over us and guide us, and we may know your will for this coming year. Father God, we ask that you would be with, guard, and guide each of the citizens of this community, be with us as a body tonight, and we just pray for your blessings in the coming year. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number one, under request and presentations, neighborhood decorating presentation. Presentation, neighborhood decorating contest winners by the beautification board. I believe we have our liaison to the beautification board, Fran Burns, and the chairperson of that subcommittee, Joe Wright, and I'll meet you at the podium.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you that did the decorations. It was really tough on the judges this year to pick out some winners. In fact, I had several call me and said, "What do I do? I got a butcher out there that really win." And I said, "It gets to the point sometimes where you just flip a coin." So they picked out some. We're going to start with section one, and the James Singleton, most creative decorations. You see here? Get this to him. Frank Fernandez, that's best use of theme. They're not here. Okay. Section, no, Billy D. House, best use of lights. They're here. Now, section two, most creative, Louis DePorto. Best use of theme, I'm not talking right. Best use of theme, K.L. Lamar.
His initials, K.L.
Then I'll give her this one. That's how she points, need to.
That's right.
Thank you.
It's a relationship that'll last forever.
The next one is best use of lights, G.Y. Cox. Section three, most creative, Loretta Bannister. She's not here. Mary Thompson, best use of theme. And best use of lights, Doyle Davis. They're not here. Section four, most creative, Malcolm Milligan. Best use of theme, Larry Batson. Best use of lights, Britt Centrocco. No, okay. Thank you. Okay, section five, most creative, Joe and Norma Overdark. They're out of town, I understand. Best use of theme, Ronnie and Janet Long.
And I know Ms. Long did most of that.
Are you a pointer?
Okay, best use of lights, Robert Lawrence Bridges.
I just want to ask them where they put all those deer during the summer.
Everywhere.
Just shooting at them in the backyard.
That was beautiful.
Section six, most creative, Charles Burgess. Best use of lights, George Burns Barnes. Best use of theme, James Stevens. Okay, that takes care of everything, and I really appreciate everyone doing all of the lights that they did. Thank you.
We think those that participated very much, TU Electric also thanks you very much for your participation. I also want to thank those in the community, the volunteer judges who drove around town for several nights looking at all the nice Christmas lights, trying to make some decision as to how to say one was better than the other when they were also great. Just want to thank them. We won't tell you who they are, so if you're mad, you won't know who to go pick on. Councilmember Watkins?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Joe and Henry Wright as well for opening up their street and their yard and their house and taking so much time for the buses that come through at Christmas time. They just, they spend a lot of time and effort, and the city appreciates that.
I want to take this opportunity to thank all the people that helped me on the buses. Nancy was there, Gene was there.
I was late one night, I'm sorry. I was at a council meeting, that's it.
But we had a lot of help there, and I really appreciate everyone coming by and helping with the buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ohmby?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you really want to get one more category in there next year, you ought to throw in the Tim Allen lighting category for the absolute most lights, just got it completely all out, and you'd probably really see a lot of the guys participate at that time, so.
Or the Clark Griswold Christmas Vacation. Okay, next item on tonight's agenda is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless they are removed from consent agenda upon the request of a council member or if a citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker's card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Public consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff recommendations. Our consent agenda tonight is agenda items two through sixteen, and there was none, no councilmembers wanting to pull anything off in pre-council. Councilmember Henslerling?
That's moved to approve.
Thank you. Councilmember Art?
Second.
Councilmember Ohmby?
Third.
Iverson?
Fourth.
Okay. Please signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, under public hearing, agenda item seventeen, resolution number R-199-003-06, consideration interaction regarding approving a resolution approving the city of Halton City's 25th year, 1999, community development block grant project. This is under the heading of public hearing, and I'll now open that public hearing and invite the city manager to brief us and then anyone wishing to make any comments from the audience. Mr. Assen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each year, the city designates a project in the city to be funded through community development block grant funding, which funding is received through Tarrant County, which consists in the urban county program. The program being designated for completion by the city next year through CDBG funding is Erma Street from Beet Street east to its dead end. The requirements of the CDBG program require that prior to formal designation of that street project as the CDBG project for next year, it's necessary for the city council to hold a public hearing, take any public comment, and at that point formally consider the proposal. I would point out that we're expecting to receive, in the way of grant funding next year, approximately $120,000 through this program.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this agenda? It's free money, so I don't think there's too many people speaking against it. Okay, hearing and sign now, and I'll close public hearing and open it to the council for debate and/or emotion. Councilmember Williams?
Make a motion, we approve the resolution R-199-003-06.
Okay. Councilmember Quinones?
Second.
Councilmember Art?
I was just going to make a comment that this area has had some drainage problems, and they also pointed out that this would also enhance our firefighting capabilities for that area.
You're here. Okay, if you would signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I don't believe we have any speaker's request cards. The general, we've got one for an agenda item coming up later, but so the visitors and citizens forum will not be held this evening. Under other business, agenda item eighteen, one of my favorites, been a long time in coming, resolution number R-199-004-16, consideration interaction regarding approval of a resolution approving a feasibility study cost sharing with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for Little Fossil Creek. Mr. Assen, if you want to give us a little better geographic description than that, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 1993, the Federal Emergency Management Administration re-designated significant portions of the south part of the city and the general proximity of Carson Street and 121 as being either in the floodway or the flood plain. That designation process had two effects. First, it limited substantially the ability of both residential and business property owners to add to their properties or add to the buildings in that area. It also had some significant effect because of that on values of the property located in the vicinity of that intersection. As a result of that, the city and some property owners along Airport Freeway jointly agreed to hire a consulting firm to determine if there were any way that much of that property could be removed from the flood plain. The result of that analysis by the consulting engineering firm was that certain channel improvements could be made, which would, through improved carrying capacity in the channel, reduce the amount of flood plain in the area. The city at that point approached the Corps of Engineers, which participates in funding of studies and construction projects of this type, to speak with them about the possibility of obtaining some Corps of Engineers funding to go forward with making the necessary improvements. Unfortunately, at about that time, federal funding for that particular program was done away with by Congress, and it was just recently added back approximately a year ago. The Corps of Engineers has done at our request some preliminary reconnaissance to determine if a project is feasible, to do what the city has been trying to accomplish for several years now, and that's take most of this area out of the flood plain. The Corps has indicated at this point, they believe that such a project is feasible, and the next step in the process then is for us to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the Corps of Engineers to formally determine what the exact scope of the work is that would have to be done. Once that scope of work is determined through this joint analysis, if you will, then the city will have to make a determination as to whether or not it wants to go forward with sharing the cost of the construction of the facility, which would also be done on a 50-50 basis with the Corps of Engineers. The cost of the study is $357,100. Half of that would be city-financed, $178,550. $107,000 of that is needed this month, assuming that the council agrees to go forward with the project. The remaining balance, $71,000, would be due in October. At this point, we would recommend, because of the impact that the designation that FEMA had in 1993, that we go forward with the joint study with the Corps of Engineers and that the funds for it be taken from the additional revenue resulting from the renegotiated Lone Star Gas franchise agreement, which was accomplished late last year.
Thank you, Mr. Assen, for that brief synopsis. Any members of council have any questions for this? If not, we're in line for a motion. Councilmember Art?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think that this is definitely something that's needed, and I'm all in favor of it.
In the form of a motion?
Definitely.
Okay. Councilmember Quinones?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Williams?
I was going to say, can you second?
Councilmember Iverson? Please signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moves us a long ways ahead on that project. Agenda item nineteen, draft agreement for the Trinity Railway Express for some funding for the annual operating costs. Mr. Assen?
Thank you again. As I think the city council and probably many people in the audience are aware, a project has been underway for several years now. That project being a commuter rail connection between downtown Dallas and downtown Fort Worth, with a number of stops along the way that would serve communities in between Dallas and Fort Worth. Both the Dallas-area Rapid Transit Authority, or DART, and the Fort Worth Transit Authority will be paying the majority of the costs of operation. They will also be, along with the federal government, paying all of the capital costs involved with constructing the facility, buying the trains, and so on. The council of governments, which is serving as sort of an intermediary, intermediary on this project, has approached the various suburban cities that are not either part of the Fort Worth Transit Authority or DART, and asked that they also consider participating in funding some of the annual operating costs, those costs that would be above and beyond the costs that would be paid for by the actual users through payment affairs. What has happened to this point is that COG has developed a proposed or a draft agreement, and I emphasize draft, because this evening we're only asking the council to give some feel back to the council of governments on your thoughts on, first of all, the city participating in the program, and secondly, your thoughts with regard to the draft agreement. Essentially, the draft agreement is a five-year contract with no payments due by the city for the first two years of that five-year agreement, because the service will not be up and running till the third year. The third year payment proposed by the city of Halton City is $10,000, which represents two-tenths of one percent of the ridership that's projected to come from the mid-cities or central cities areas. Again, those cities not served by DART or the Fort Worth Transit Authority. The amounts due in year four and year five of the five-year agreement would depend on actual ridership, which would be monitored during that third year and again in the fourth year. If ridership is less than the projections in the third year, then the city's participation would go down. If ridership from Halton City residents is greater than that, then our participation rate would go up. Again, the city would be under no obligation to finance any capital costs. At the end of the five years, the city could opt out of the agreement altogether. With that, I'd see if council has any questions regarding the agreement, and again, the intent this evening is only to get a feel from the council as to whether or not you would want to enter into such agreement at some point in the future. You're not being asked to formally approve the document before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Assen. Any member of council have any questions, problems with this? If not, we're in line for a motion for approval. Councilmember Quinones?
I did have one question, and I should ask this pre-council. What would be the consequences if we just didn't participate?
Well, that question has come up in several of these meetings, and the feeling at this point is that by both DART and Fort Worth Transit Authority is they really don't want to address that unless there are some cities that don't participate. If some cities don't participate, the cost goes up for everyone else, and if there are cities that don't participate, then likely the result is that residents of those cities would pay a higher fare or would pay for a parking fee at the parking ride facility, the closest of which would be at Hanley-Eaterville and Airport Freeway. A final determination has not been made, but most likely the end result is there would be some additional cost to Halton City users of the facility.
Councilmember Art?
I was just going to make a comment saying that I think a lot of our citizens will be using this service, because I know my wife, for instance, works in Irving. That's one of the, one of the mother stops that they have, and I know there's a lot of their.
Isn't there a stop at Bell Helicopter as well?
There's going to be one. Okay, just what I was going to throw out next. But I think there's going to be a lot of our citizens utilizing that. It goes all the way from downtown Fort Worth to downtown Dallas.
Is that in form of a motion?
Cause a line of a motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I was just curious, I answered part of my question about being on Hanley-Eaterville Road and 121. Now, will this go into Dallas and then over to Irving, or into Irving and then over to Dallas, or?
There are several stops along the way. The first, the next stop beyond east of Hanley-Eaterville will be Bell Helicopter. There'll be one just south of DFW Airport, which will eventually have connections into the terminals. At DFW, it'll be done initially by bus service and at some point in the future by rail service. There'll also be another stop in Arlington, one in North Grand Prairie, one in South Irving, one at the so-called Medical District in Dallas, and then downtown Dallas.
And westbound.
Between here and, between here and Fort Worth, there will be none. There'll be one at the old T&amp;P Rail Building at just south of I-30, south of downtown, and there'll be a Ninth Street intermodal station there where people can hook up with city bus service in Fort Worth. But most of the services, logically enough, are going to be eastern here, because that's where most of the served area is.
We don't have a bus service either. How far does the bus still come? Does it still come to Lake and Avenue, or is it?
It does not anymore. It turns around somewhere on Beet Street. There was a time when it came a few blocks into the city, but it does not do that any longer.
Well, that possibly could give some transportation back to downtown for people that live down in the southern part of the city.
Who aren't comfortable driving downtown.
Or maybe, yeah, then that was for a second.
Thank you. Councilmember Henslerling?
I just had a question. When are they anticipating the, being operational?
The end of the year 2000.
End of the year 2000. Okay, thank you.
The Dallas side is well into operation, I guess not totally into operation, but that, it's coming this way, I guess, is the way to look at it.
The only stations outside of Dallas at this point, or the only station, is at South Irving, and earlier preliminary indications are that ridership there is quite a bit higher than they had expected, so, you know, whether or not that's going to be indicative of what happens along the entire route, I don't know, but at least preliminary indications are pretty positive.
Will we ever have the train for to stop there?
Different line altogether.
I hear different, have to be a good place to stop.
Okay, a motion is second. Please signify your vote. Agenda item twenty, staffing for the planning function, consideration interaction regarding authorizing additional staffing for the planning function. Mr. Assen?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. In the last couple of years, due to increased growth and increased construction activity in the community, we've added personnel in a couple of areas, one in the engineering area, and also additional personnel in the building inspection area, and I think we're at a point now where we're confronted with a similar situation with regard to the planning and community development functions. We continue to see high levels of activity in these areas in terms of processing the number of cases that come forward. In addition to that, there are a number of special projects that we would like to see done out of that department that, due to caseload activity, we've just not been able to complete. So this evening, we're recommending to you that you add an additional planner, professional level planner position to the staffing complement in the community development area, and that be done at a grade 23 under the city's personnel classification system. The funding for compensating this person for the remainder of the fiscal year would also come from the source identified a little bit earlier, that's the Lone Star Gas franchise renewal and the additional revenue associated with it.
Thank you, Mr. Assen. Any questions from council? Councilmember Williams?
On this planner, I know that it wasn't discussed in the budget, well, we had discussed some positions in the budget, but I don't know. I think we may have touched lightly on this one, or Karen did need some.
Heavily on it.
No, it's not this position.
No, I'm sure that we touched on this. I know we didn't put it in the budget at this time. One of my questions would be, would this be a long-term job since we're limited to what we can, to what we can span to? And Karen, Mrs. Mitchell's a real good friend of mine through the council here, so I don't want to be derogatory, but are we throwing out too many stumbling stones that we're creating a problem for ourselves, or is this something that just, do we? You answer my first question, let her answer my second question.
In terms of is it a permanent position, I answer it's permanent in the sense that any position is. If building activity and plating and zoning activity were to decrease substantially and there wasn't adequate work for this person, then I would not hesitate to come back to and tell you we should delete it from the budget. I don't expect that to happen for a few years, but if it does, then we don't need, people on payroll don't have any work to do.
Well, if we did delete them, would it be on a seniority basis? We wouldn't lose Mrs. Mitchell, would we?
I don't know, I'd have to think about that.
So would I.
No, well, they would not have the same job classifications either, so the assistant position would go before the director's position would go, although I would tell you that.
What this is, is this is somebody who would be under, you know, my direction, who would be able to take some of the caseload burden so that, in addition to helping out with taking some of the caseload, which, you know, as any city grows, your planning department really should grow appropriately, because you're going to have other issues. I don't want us to have to contract out for all of the planning functions that are anything other than caseload, because I'm perfectly capable of doing a lot of the functions. Some of them we, later on, way, way, way away, depending on what the project is, we may have to contract out, but things like updating the comprehensive plan, things like updating our zoning ordinance, things like that, that we would not have to contract out, that could be done in-house.
Okay, the lady that works with you, Mrs.?
Linda Huff, uh-huh.
Is she in any way qualified for this job?
No, this is a degreed position. What would happen in her particular case is, is that a lot of the load would actually be taken off of her and shifted over to the planner. There's a lot of things that she's doing right now, technical things, for instance, the 200-foot notification. Items such as that would be shifted over to the planner.
Okay, will this free you up then, to let you work on the zoning and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Clean up the contradictions and those and whatnot?
That's what we're hoping.
I would think that would be a very important thing, because we have lots of contradictions in there. We're going to have workshop for those via TV Tuesday night, the 19th of January, this coming Tuesday night, at 7:00 p.m. at the library, and we're going to be discussing some zoning ordinances in there. It's going to be an open workshop, everyone's invited to come, but I think that this would free Mrs. Mitchell up, you know, it's something we should look at. I know that we do have a complaint of some backups in that department as far, and I don't work in that department, so I don't know what the backups are, what the stumbling blocks are, and I don't use that derogatory, I don't know. But we need to get this stuff to where we can get, while the economy's good, we need to get things moving.
Okay, set in the form of a motion?
I'm wanting to see if anybody else on the council wants to give any kind of, we do have money set aside, money that showed up for this. I'll let the city manager briefly tell the citizens where the money's going to come from.
He did.
You already told them.
I have to again, earlier this year, fiscal year, the city renegotiated our contract, the franchise agreement with Lone Star Gas, and due to the structuring of that renegotiation, previously Lone Star Gas paid on an annual basis their franchise fees based on sales of gas in the prior calendar year, and under the new contract, they will pay on a quarterly basis based upon gas sold, dollar volume of gas sold in the prior quarter. So the result of that is, in the current year, we'll receive the annual payment we always receive, plus three quarterly payments, which would amount to approximately $270,000 total. It was not included in the budget because we had not finalized those negotiations at that time.
Well, seeing that I did briefly bring this up at the budget meeting, jump up and down, I didn't lay down the floor and give them a leg. down, I didn't lay down the floor and give my lay, that is in form of a motion.
Okay, well, you don't have to throw a temper tantrum here. Councilmember Watkins?
At the risk of-
Beating a dead horse?
Getting beat up because I'm really close to Ms. Mitchell here. I just need something explained to me. During budget session, did we not say we would not be expecting as much revenue coming in because we were getting built out or up, so to speak? And if that's the case, then that's what I need explained to me. Did I dream that, or is that what we did?
No, that is indeed what we talked about as it related to additional construction of single-family homes in town because of where our current lot inventory stood at that time. Many of the cases that we're seeing today are redevelopment-type issues that aren't necessarily gonna have building permit revenue associated with them, some will, some won't, but it certainly sounds like a contradiction, but one is more directly tied to lot inventory and what we're talking about this evening. This particular person would be involved in a lot of applications and considerations that don't really involve plating of new single-family subdivisions.
Okay, so we were, that would be apples and oranges, not related?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But you were right, you did hear it. Councilmember Henchler?
Yeah, this item number one here, you talked about decrease in case processing time. And you, we provide a, the city provides a service, I think it's an invaluable service. I'm just curious on the many feasibility studies and pre-conferences you have.
Pre-application conference, right.
How many of those? Do you track those, how many you have, and maybe what percentage of your time you actually spend doing many feasibilities?
We, I would say, let's see, if you look on the last page of your backup that we've given you, we show, they're referred to as DRCs, which is Development Review Committee. And we started these when I came on, which would, I believe we started them about April of 97, no, I'm sorry, when I came on, and, no, it's been April of 97.
That's what it says here.
Yeah, and we did 12 the first year in 1998. Actually, we had more than 30, we had more like 33, because from the time I did this until the time of the end of the year, we had about, I think, three or four DRCs. So, we have spent a lot of time. As far as the amount of time that we spend on it, it depends on what they submit to us. It's a very informal process, and so we asked them to kinda give us an idea. They gave us a letter of intent, and we have one in, for example, right now, where the people didn't know exactly what they wanted to do with their property. So, we asked them to give us different scenarios, you know, scenario one, two, and three. They may wanna use the property for one thing, or they may wanna use it for another. Based on the scenarios that they have given us and the information they provide to us, we go through the ordinances and we look to see what is going to apply to their particular piece of property. When they make a formal submittal based on that, of course, those comments may change because they're gonna get more in detail at that time.
Okay. I think it's a terrific service, and, you know, you, part of this, you had some dialogue here, it said that some of the cases, all the applicants said this is really the best thing that Haltum City does.
Even when we give them bad news. But they're thankful that they have gone through this process instead of spending a lot of money and time on it where they could find out upfront before they made the investment.
Sure. So many times, we hear that maybe Haltum City and other cities get kinda labeled not being business-friendly, but I think this is one of those areas that allows us to be business-friendly. I think this is a good use of your time, and everybody's time, and saves in the long run on everybody, so I, that part of it, I like it. And you also mentioned later on about being proactive versus reactive, and there's only very few city services or areas of the city government, I think, that really have the opportunity to be proactive, and we need to be more proactive. And so, for that, I'm in agreement with it.
Councilmember Quinones?
Yes, a couple of questions. Karen, you're, I think, one of the priorities for projects and listings that you had, that 's factoring in the new person, the new planner, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And are these listed in the order that they're priorities to you, or they just listed just for us?
No, they're ordered priorities, in my opinion, ordered priorities. I would like to say for this, some of these things, maybe really only two of them can be done concurrently. For instance, if I get a planner in and that planner comes up to speed and they can, I feel confident that they can take over on a lot of stuff. For instance, while I'm reviewing the zoning ordinance for the inaccuracies, I may also be able to start on the brochures, informational brochures. Right. But I don't think that I could do the zoning ordinance, for instance, and the comprehensive plan review concurrently. Those are things one would have to be complete before we started the next one.
Well, I think we're all aware of the need there, and given the fact that I noticed in your breakdown of the caseload that the special exceptions are down, but that's gonna be rising, because as we put, as, you know, apparently the trend is to put more and more things, the special exceptions, could be more of those, and variances as well. And I don't think we wanna get on the treadmill where we're falling behind every time we do something. I think we're pretty close to that point now if we don't do, take care of it, so, you know, I would speak in favor of adding this position.
In the form of a motion?
Yes, if somebody else has.
I don't, I don't-
I think John-
Did John, okay, sorry.
I didn't make the motion.
I'm sorry.
Stealing my thunder.
That was 15 minutes ago. Councilman Art?
I was gonna second.
Okay.
Nobody else had?
I did have another.
Okay, Councilmember Williams?
I did have another question on this, of course. I don't know where we stand on our pace study. I don't know if Mr. Huff left or not, or.
I can probably help you.
I would like to know, you may finish mine.
Sure.
All right. I don't know where we stand on the pace study, as far as, you know, how this position's gonna fit in that study, whether or not we have something in the study that will show that. And I don't know if we, you need to go ahead and set the salary, say a hard-paid surface like concrete, until we find out what the, what the study's gonna tell us, or, of course, you know, the study may come back and tell us that it's not the 20,000 to 30,000, nobody says it's 50,000.
Yeah, that's-
Mrs. Mitchell may complain about that.
It seems unlikely, so it's possible, but where we are now is, all employees have completed a questionnaire which details current job functions, qualifications, so on. Those are now being evaluated by the consultants, and Mr. Huff and I will be meeting with representatives of the consulting firm late next week to talk about where we are. I'd say we're probably a couple of months away from finalizing that study, but we've kinda eyeballed where we think this thing is gonna fit into the overall structure. It's a possibility it could deviate a little bit one way or the other, but we think we're gonna be pretty close with what we projected at this point. Mr. Huff has reviewed it, as have I, and I think that it makes sense in terms of the structure as it is today. It may change slightly, but our only other option would be to wait that two or three months to do something with this position, and I felt it was important we go forward at this time.
I would like to try and hire somebody on the low if we could, as far as.
So is our preference.
Just to make sure you know.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Williams, a second by Councilmember Art. Any further discussions? Quick, quick. Please signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank y'all very much.
Very well.
You can bow now.
Are you gonna apply?
There's cake back here for you.
Yeah, the take the councilman to lunch schedule will be posted on the bulletin board.
Dinner tomorrow night?
Okay, let's move us into the addendum of tonight's agenda. The addendum would be under other business, item 20A and 20B. 20A is bid award for rubber tire loader backhoe. Consideration interaction regarding approval of that bid. Mr. Assen? Now, I do have one speaker's request on that, so we'll, when the time comes.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Last month, the city council awarded a bid for the purchase of a John Deere backhoe to RDO Equipment Company. Since that time, and then just recently, we have learned that there was a key element of the equipment that was spec'd out by that company that did not meet specifications. Since we discovered that, we have notified the company that, it had come to our attention at this point, that the bid that was submitted did not meet our specifications, and we would not be able to honor the award to them, and would then have to go to the second-low bidder, DAR Equipment Company. As you might expect, there was some concern expressed by RDO Equipment with regard to that. They have a representative here this evening who I believe is going to address this issue in the near future, or on this agenda this evening. The concern that we have at the staff level is, considering that the low bid didn't meet specifications, we feel we really have one of two options, not accept the low bid which failed to meet our specifications, or to re-bid. If we re-bid, it appears we would probably only get one bid. I don't believe there's any reason to believe that price would be more favorable if we went through that process, so we're recommending at this point that we pass on the low bid which did not meet specifications and award the bid to DAR Equipment Company. Mr. Kendrick, the Public Works Director, may you like to make some additional comments? If not, I know that someone from RDO is here this evening, and I would emphasize that we have done business with RDO in the past, find them to be a very good company, and nothing in the city's action is intended to be a negative reflection on that company, again, because of past experience with them, and what we hope will be a lot of future experience with them as well. I did wanna emphasize that we have no negative comments to make about the company itself.
Thank you, Mr. Assen. Well, go ahead and let Mr. Segman, is that correct? If you would, sir, Jeff Segman of 5680 Rockport Lane.
Here's some handouts, if I could.
Sure.
I promise you not to retract this thing very long.
Thank you.
I promise. As Bill said, my name is Jeff Segman, and I reside at 5680 Rockport Lane in Haltum City. I've lived in Haltum City, I guess, about 17 years. Wife and I lived, and my children, south of 820, and saw a need to go north of 820, so we chose to stay in Haltum City, and enjoy it very much. I think that what Bill has brought forth, and I do wanna say to Mayor Larson and to the council and staff, we do appreciate the opportunity to talk, and at the same time, we wanna thank your city manager, Mr. Eisen, and Mr. Kendrick for talking with us this afternoon about this thing. We received the bid, I believe it was bid number 98-003-11, for the rubber tire backhoe we're talking about this evening. As the city managers mentioned, we were a low bid. Second-low bidder was DAR Equipment Company. The issue that's brought us to this point is reflected on the first page of your handout. It's a portion of the specification for the backhoe loader. The item, and I'm assuming that they're all highlighted, forgive me if they're not, it's a line just above tires, first page, says mechanical hoe clamp, hydraulic clamp not acceptable. When our salesperson, Gary Coke, received the bid, we bid the piece in good faith. I think that everyone understands here that certainly the John Deere and the Caterpillar product are both strong players in the market. I've been involved with the product many years. I was in Fleet and Transportation with the city of Fort Worth as Assistant Fleet Director for a little over 10 years, so I've, again, I'm not trying to say that to overwhelm you. I'm just trying to say that I've spent a lot of time with the product, and if it didn't feel strongly, I probably wouldn't be standing here before you this evening. In any event, there was several conversations. You happen to have a John Deere product that has what we now find to be the hoe clamp on it. I wanna give you just a real short background, and then I'll press on. It's a very common item to use what's referred to affectionately as a thumb associated with your backhoe bucket. It's used a great deal in the market where they deal with railroad crossings, cross ties, things like that, pick it up, thumb it, load it, move it, what have you. And, of course, that's become the bone of contention in this whole thing. Our salesperson, when he read mechanical hoe clamp, he made a more generic interpretation, as I spoke with Bill and Mr. Kendrick this afternoon. We've later come to realize that there's a more specific interpretation for that. There is a manufacturer, and forgive me, ladies and gentlemen, I did not write that name down, could you help me?
Amulet?
Amulet, right. And Amulet produces what they refer to specifically as a hoe clamp. Now, the way, the big difference between the hoe clamp made by Amulet and the device that's been provided by RDO, and you can take a look very briefly on the second page of your handout, under the John Deere product line, we have mechanical clamps available. But by and large, the big difference between the hoe clamp and our clamp is the design and the geometrics, and I won't, I won't beat that issue to death. I think it's real clear that, you know, that staff of Haltum City like the hoe clamp arrangement. But I think the big problem that we're running into here, and why I'm here before you, is that we provided a bid response to the document, believing this to be a generic description to a thumb type, a grappling sort of device to allow truck loading of concrete, asphalt, any type of bulk material. Consequently, our sales staff looked at that, provided the generic equivalent, a grappling device, and provided the bid. This governing body did, in fact, adopt and provide a purchase order to RDO Equipment The difficulty arises in that at that point, the unit was ordered, and I've got to point out to you, the unit that was ordered is a very governmental-oriented machine, and there's certainly nothing negative about that. It was a cab unit, four-wheel drive, extendable dipper stick, a unit that, you know, is very customary in the governmental realm, because it does, in fact, have a versatility of usage. But in the retail market, that unit is not very common, okay? There are people that do use extender hoes, there are people that do use four-wheel drives, but the common unit in our rental or prospective sale force would be a cab unit. What I'm trying to describe to you in brief is that the unit that this body provided us a purchase order for has already been bought, been ordered, and the equipment and the attachments associated therein have already been ordered, and we're at the point of no return. Now, we're about to receive a unit in the months to come, and essentially, we'll have a non-marketable piece of equipment. And ladies and gentlemen, I clearly come out of an environment where I understand needs, and I understand that sometimes the governments tries to, people try to kinda boil them over, and I don't mean to be in that arena, and I don't wanna be in that arena. I wanna do a good job for Haltum City on part of RDO, but at the same time, we've got a machine that, at this point, we will simply not be able to market, because the machine is going to be adorned with accessories that are not common. And the key in this thing is, and I appreciate Bill bringing it up, we're not asking the city of Haltum City to bear the burden in this thing at all. We, as RDO, believe completely that the machine that we specified, that we assembled in response to the bid, is a fully functional, capable thumb attachment, able to provide truck loading capability and bulk loading capability. And I might point out that we're dealing with a $64,000 to $68,000 purchase, but the thumb attachment, important as it is, and I understand that, amounts to 3% or 4% of the price of this machine. So essentially, I just appeal to you to consider the action this evening and understand that there is some exposure that we're gonna have in this thing. Again, this is gonna sound, I hope, not negative, I don't mean it that way, but traditionally, in my experience, in the environment that I came out of in the city of Fort Worth, once a vendor had been issued a purchase order, that was an understood agreement that all parties had reviewed, staff had reviewed, and that the offering was acceptable to the body, and that a purchase order was then issued. And we're finding out, obviously, after the fact, after the bid's been received, the PO's been received, the tractor's been ordered, that we've obviously got a problem. We just beseech you to consider your action this evening and understand that, again, we're not asking Haltum City to burden the responsibility for the problem, quote-unquote, because we do believe the machine is fully functional and capable, and John Deere's an outstanding product, just like our competitor, the Caterpillar, is. But we acted in good faith, ladies and gentlemen, based on the low bid. We ordered, we acted. We ordered, we acted, and now we have exposure. And if this governing body carries forward with their actions, we'll be without a purchase order. And I hope you understand the concern. Now, I'm going to back up from this thing, and if it's reasonable, I would field a question. Otherwise, for all intent and purposes, I expect I have given the information necessary.
Thank you. Councilor Ombi, your light was on earlier. Did you just stomach bump it?
All right. Councilman Vart?
I would just like to ask Chuck, if he'd step up and kind of explain to us what's going on here and what we can do to fix it.
Yeah, we're not going to get into tit for tat.
No.
I'd like to hear the other side.
I hope not. While putting this specification out for bids, we, city staff, the two supervisors, a couple of equipment operators, and myself, spent a good deal of time with both the salesmen from RDO and from Dar Equipment, to see what equipment they were offering and what available options were on the street today. As you know, we purchased two John Deere backhoes from RDO Equipment last year. At the time we made that purchase, there was not a hoe clamp available for that four-ten machine we intend to buy this year. Like I said, we spent a good deal of time talking to the sales reps from both of those manufacturers to make sure that the available equipment was an option this year, and we were assured that it was. Both the vendors were given the opportunity to look at the piece of equipment that we currently own, which is a John Deere backhoe with the clamp that the city desires to buy. Both of the sales reps looked at that clamp. It's my understanding that Mr. Coke is in the audience tonight, had an appointment with one of our equipment operators to copy the serial number down of that clamp, so he could provide us the clamp that we wanted. In my opinion, the description of the mechanical hoe clamp is quite clear to the people in this business. A mechanical device is one that moves, it's not a stationary or rigid device, in my opinion. The manufacturers of these hoe clamps use three terms to describe hoe clamps. They call one a rigid device, the other mechanical, and the other a hydraulic. Because both the hydraulic and the mechanical move, I wanted to make sure that we got the mechanical device that was not operated by an independent hydraulic cylinder, which is why I put hydraulic clamp is not acceptable to the city. We owned a backhoe with a hydraulic clamp on it for about, well, we owned it for ten years. We traded it in last year. Sometime before we traded that machine in, we disconnected the hydraulic lines to the cylinder, because that cylinder was down on the working end of that machine, and we constantly had troubles breaking lines and having hydraulic failures, so we chose not to use another hydraulic-operated clamp. But, you know, in closing, I just feel like that our understanding on paper and in communication orally with both of the vendors was clear to the best of our ability of what we wanted, and that was not a rigid device that they intend to provide us. It's not the same in its capabilities or its function.
Quick question, is this clamp available for this tractor? Is it just an additional expense? Or is it?
The mechanical clamp that I'm referring to is not available for this model machine. However, prior to going out to bid, we were led to believe that it was.
Okay.
I'm using the word led to believe. I think they believed that it was.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I guess since Chuck said that now, I'd like to ask the gentleman from RDO, Jeff, is yours a mechanical, or is it hydraulic? Or what type is yours?
Well, I think what we're getting into, again...
The question to ask is, does the clamp move under...
Right.
That's what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Is it a stationary device? And the answer is a stationary device.
The clamp that's been made available is stationary. I think the big issue lies that the hydraulic thumb clamps eons ago, and they're still widely used today, essentially being hydraulic driven, put another cylinder, more hose and piping down in the working area. And that in of itself is problematic, we understand that. Really, what we're dealing with is more geometrics. I think the reality of it is, the manufacturer of the hoe clamp has a very unique, very well-patented design that is not available to the John Deere product. It provides a more scissoring effect. It's kind of rough, it's semantics. Realistically, that clamp runs off the hydraulic bucket cylinder. As the bucket linkage moves, the clamp moves. Ladies and gentlemen, I guess, in my estimation, I was not really going to get too heavily into that point. It's simply a matter of whether a two-jawed device comes together to mate with the face of the bucket to grapple, or whether one remains rigid and the bucket closes to grapple with it. The idea behind this thing, again, I understand Chuck's thoughts on this thing, but the issue behind this thing, to me, is whether we can grapple and lift and load. We are rigid, yet mechanical, in that, I guess the point is, in my experience, mechanical, meaning without hydraulic, hydraulic, if you said, did you have a hydraulic thumb, I'm going to envision one cylinder, two hoses, with the sole and express function of closing and opening a thumb. That's a hydraulic version. All other grapples from that point are mechanical, whether they're fixed or rigid, whether they work in concert with the bucket linkage, or whether there's a fixed position for the bucket to close against. The issue is grappling, lifting, and loading. And again, I want to point something out, you know, I don't want to get too much into the hydraulic portion of it. Realistically, that particular clamp, again, works off the bucket linkage, which works off the hydraulics. I mean, it could be argued it's hydraulic, but that's not the reason we're here. The clamp is mechanical, that Halton City has required. The clamp that we've got is mechanical. The question being the geometrics and how it actually performs, whether it closes in this manner or whether it closes in this manner.
See, that's what I'm up against, because it says right here, mechanical hoe clamp, and in a parentheses, it says hydraulic clamp's not acceptable. Now, that's what I have to judge my opinion on.
Yeah, we're not hydraulic, and realistically, the other one's not hydraulic, other than operating off the bucket linkage.
So, I guess what it boils down to is, how much is it going to cost to do it the way we want it versus what you've got?
Well, the problem lies in that the design is patented, and that particular clamp is simply not available for the John Deere product.
I thought Chuck just said that it was.
Well, there was...
We own an earlier model, John Deere backhoe, that was equipped with the mechanical clamp. It is not available for this model, the four-ten-e, which is the current production machine. That clamp is not available.
John Deere went through quite a bit of production changes. Again, not bore you with too many details, but the four-ten-e is designed in such a manner to be like a small rubber tired excavator, to be fast, to be efficient, to be durable. And one of the things that changes sometimes to gain digging force, breakout and otherwise, is the geometrics. And apparently, and gentlemen, ladies, I cannot speak exponentially to this specific point, but obviously, something has occurred, which has made this particular clamp not compatible with our particular machine. But again, I think it kind of boils back, and I'm not apprised of a lot of the conversation that occurred in the formulation of this, but at the same time, it's important for us to understand that we interpreted this as a non-proprietary piece of specification, simply a clamping device. Again, ladies and gentlemen, a clamping device on a backhoe bucket is a very common item. You either do it mechanically, or you do it hydraulically. You may play with the geometrics of the linkage, you may play in somewhat with the design, but realistically, you're either going to thumb it hydraulically, or you're going to close it mechanically. The rationale behind it, you could actually argue they're all hydraulic, because the bucket's got to move to create the clamping device. But I don't want to get into that point, that's not the point here today. We could play semantics for quite some time, and we don't want to go there.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
Council has a picture of this, and no disrespect to earth-moving equipment, I don't, I'm not in earth, but this looks like a device to make this piece of equipment to do something that probably another piece of equipment is built and made to do. Is that true?
Well, and again, yeah, there's a variety of ways to grapple and clamp, and I, gosh, I think that, from what I've looked at, the way the machine is specified, four-wheel drive, cab, extended hoe, that what they've done is create a fairly versatile piece of equipment. And the governmental arena, that's real common. There's absolutely nothing. You could clamp with a loader bucket, you could clamp with a backhoe bucket, you could do it a variety of ways.
William?
Let me tell you, we use that for most. We go out to fix a water main break, and as you know, eighty-five percent of the water mains are under paint, either concrete or asphalt. And the first thing that he has to do is bust through that pavement with the backhoe bucket. He creates big chunks of asphalt and concrete or whatever, carbon gutter, and he's got to get that out of the way and put it on the dot truck and move it out of there so he can fix the water main break. The alternative to using a device like this is, number one, either chopping up that material in a small enough piece that'll fit inside the bucket, or having an individual get down and heat that thing over into a bucket on the front end of the backhoe, the loader end, and use that to load truck with. This just makes the backhoe a lot more efficient at moving chunks of material that normally won't fit inside that bucket, get them out of the way and get them into a truck.
It's really not what this piece of machinery is designed for.
That piece of machinery was designed for digging, but part of digging is to get that material...
Yeah, it's not made for loading, it's actually made for digging and moving the dirt out of the way.
Correct.
Yeah.
The really nice thing about this mechanical device, as opposed to a rigid or fixed thumb, is that when you open the bucket, because it operates like a scissor, the clamp moves back out of your way. You can dig with that thing, just like you dig with the backhoe, without that device on there. The rigid device, if you're going to use it for digging, and there's anything in the way, an obstruction, you've got to stop digging, you've got to get somebody on the ground to untend that rigid clamp, fold it back against the arm, and pin it in that position. Then again, if you want to use it as a grapple to pick up something, you have to reverse that operation, pin it in a working position, and use the bucket to pick up something. This has just turned out to be a lot more versatile piece of equipment than a rigid... My operators have indicated to me that if their choice is a rigid thumb or no thumb at all, they'll take no thumb. They just, they don't want the hassle of pinning and unpinning this device.
Is this a portion of the spec sheet that we bid out on?
Yes.
Around here? And hydraulic clamp not acceptable was put on there when this was...
Right.
But this is, now, when was this approved by the city council?
December '70.
Ninety-eight?
Yes, month ago.
Probably made the motion to approve it. Yeah, I think the machine was ordered, when was the machine ordered? Couple of weeks thereafter?
P L S fifteen.
Next day? Okay.
Y'all received a purchase order to order this equipment?
Yes, sir. In fact, it's your fourth page of your handout.
It's a piece of equipment being built, do you know that?
Yes, sir.
It's already under construction.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, y'all are going to pay for the piece of equipment regardless?
Right.
I mean, there's no whoops, we made a mistake.
No, and the issue...
With special order piece of equipment, I understand that you can't sell this to just anybody, it's going to be somebody that's going to special order.
It's essentially governmentally arranged, and don't get me wrong, there's nothing wrong with that. It just, it shows the characteristics of being used for as many functions and capabilities as possible. And what Chuck's referring to, Councilman Williams, as far as being able to load the solids like he's talking about, there's nothing wrong with that. I think that's real wise. I mean, you only got a couple of choices. You can either take the point of the bucket, which is damaging to the machine, break it into small enough pieces where you can load it, or you thumb it and load it. There's nothing wrong with that, absolutely nothing wrong with that. Again, I think the big question, we've got a very serious situation relative to dollars and liability on our side, being weighed over basically a twenty-eight-hundred-dollar thumb and how it functions. And that's obviously a problem with us. And again, the big issue, if this decision's made in the occurrence, all this conversation occurs prior to the ordering of a machine, we've got a clearly different animal. I mean, we might be upset, we might disagree, but we have all the liability now associated with the purchase of a piece of equipment, and no place to take it. Therein lies the difficulty.
There was a good deal of discussion, as far as you're referring to, prior to, there was a good deal of discussion prior to bidding this, and the city feels like it was very clearly understood what we're specifying in this document. Not only that, but when we placed the, when I recommended to the council to order this bid and we issued a purchase order, we, the city likewise did that in good faith, and we were getting the piece of equipment that not only was specified on paper, but discussed between RDO and our city representatives. There was a good faith that was on our part.
And ladies and gentlemen, I personally really, I can't speak to that. We met this afternoon and discussed some of those issues with Bill and with Chuck, and I can't really give positive commentary one way or the other. I was not directly involved at that point.
Did we solicit you, or did you solicit, how did we come about getting your bid?
Well, of course, I assume you publicly advertised, and obviously, being our business, I would assume you came by, picked up a package? Okay.
Were the two bids on that we received on this...
Right.
And if we go to the, if we go to the one that Caterpillar made, I don't know if there's a Caterpillar representative here.
No, sure there's no.
If we go to the one, if we request the one that they make, then are we, are we putting ourselves in a position where, you know, they can ask anything for it?
They bid that their glass is good for sixty days.
Councilmember, I've got two other councilmembers that have some legal questions, and I think you're kind of heading in that direction as well. What I'd like to do this time is, we've got a few legal technical questions we'd like to ask our attorney in executive session, and I think that's probably the appropriate place for that.
One other question.
If you have...
Sure. The difference in the trade-in allowance, four thousand dollars difference, twenty-five percent difference in cost, close to twenty-five percent difference. Y'all bid the trade-in, eleven thousand, Dar Equipment, fifteen thousand. How do y'all come about?
I'll have to ask, Eric, could you or Mike explain the trade-in allowance?
I didn't know, they never bid these things out for a bid, other than just, this is the second or third thing that's came up since I've come on the council, that we're just trading equipment in instead of taking bids on it. I know some of the stuff, we had something, we had a hundred thousand dollar bid on here while the bid was, like, probably something nobody would be like, something you'd put in garage sale or something, but something like his backhoe.
We should not have very good luck selling equipment on our own. And frankly, this is a little more than I expected that we would then we would get with ten-year-old backhoe. Either one of those, even those below us.
It's a fairly common way to dispose. If you don't have access to a big, broad, public auction or some service of that nature, it's a pretty common way to...
The best alternative, I think, would be to cut it out to, remember your brother, which would be one of those ones, and typically with them, they'll want to repaint it, replace all the glass, and put new upholstery in it, and, you know, you can spend three or four thousand dollars doing that.
Someone told me that rigid would come out.
They will, of course.
And that, well, they won't give you an appraisal, they'll give you X amount of dollars, they'll tell you approximately what it will bring. They don't guarantee it. I don't know if that's...
Correct.
But it gives you more of a ballpark.
Mayor Larson, may I make one more comment before we close? I just think it's important that we know one thing. If, in fact, I, the knowledge that we have now, the knowledge that was apparently available then, if we had known that, in fact, we were going to stick strictly to the letter of the law, that it would be an amulet hoe clamp, that essentially, there would be no approved equal, and we know now, given the patent and the geometrics, there is no approved equal. It would have been, knowing that the clamp now only fits on the Caterpillar, and I mean no negative connotation, my gosh, ladies and gentlemen, don't take it... no negative connotation, my gosh, ladies and gentlemen, don't take it that way. But the reality is, if we had known that the 436C tool carrier was the only piece that was going to fit on, we would have simply had to have passed on this business. Do you understand what I'm saying? When, in my past vocation, I was very manufacturer-specific, I flew it in your face, wide and large, amulet, manufacturer, hole clamp, model, only approved option. I made it very, very clear. I was collectively bidding the equipment, and I was being very specific with my attachments. In my old vocation at Fort Worth, I did it with my Gannon buckets, my Gannon hitches. It is legal, it has been stood up in many tests, but you've got to understand, if we had known that it was going to be, by the letter of the law, amulet, hole clamp, it would have been a business we would have had to have passed on because it's simply it's not manufactured for the John Deere 410E. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
We will be coming back out to wrap this up, so if we have more questions, we will ask you. We will at this time, I've had two councilmembers ask to meet with attorney in executive session as allowed, pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, specifically Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. We will move into executive session at nine forty-five.
Eight forty-seven.
Eight forty-five. And that's why we have him here every meeting, for him to interpret state law. Wayne, if you would?
Thank you, Mayor. The concern I've got, Mayor, is that, I've been listening to the discussion and talking with our Public Works Director, that this is a contract that's awarded pursuant to the competitive bidding statutes in the state, and we are under strict requirements from all aspects of awarding contracts under competitive bidding. The concern that I'm hearing is that we have a specification for a particular item, and whether it was in good faith or not, it appears that the particular piece of equipment that is proposed to be delivered does not meet that specification. My concern is that, therefore, this particular bid would not be a valid bid under the state law, and the city has no legal right to purchase this contract except pursuant to competitive bidding. I have explained to the Public Works Director that I think the city has two options in this regard, and that is to either reject the low bidder because it's not compliant with the specifications that were set forth for bidding, and if there's another bid that is in compliance, the council could award a contract to that bidder. Or the alternative, because of the confusion, the council will have the authority to reject all the bids and authorize city staff to resubmit this equipment for purchase by bidding and to hopefully clarify specifically the piece of equipment that is needed and receive bids that are in compliance with the specifications. But from what I've heard tonight, the product that is proposed to be delivered does not meet that one particular specification which is at issue here, and I think the city would be subjecting itself to some potential liability if we did award the contract, knowing that it didn't meet that specification.
Thank you. I'll give you an opportunity for a question or a final comment if you'd like, if you would.
I understand your attorney's concern relative to the legalities associated with a bid, but I think that my concern equally would be that the bid in and of itself was proprietary from the get, from the very beginning, being that the Caterpillar product is exactly what this unit will fit. It might have been, in retrospect, a bid that would have been more sole source appropriate. I understand the issue of compliance, but at the same time, compliance to a given language in a bidding environment does not necessarily make it correct. If I state must hang only with a Chevrolet product, Camaro being available in a pursuit environment, and a Camaro bids, am I compliant? I submit to you, no. It was an inappropriate specification. The legalities, I've spent a great deal of time searching and finding myself experienced with, hammered with, and worked with. The language, I understand, is an issue, but at the same time, the body of the specification, the environment of good faith and fairness that it was published under are also at question here. RDO took that specification, and the language associated with it, it does not state the manufacturer. It does not state the manufacturer of that thumb. Ergo, how must one assume that that is a proprietary piece of language? How are we to know that it was amulet and amulet only? Give me some thread of possibility. I mean, at the same time, the bid document is the cornerstone of your contract, a signature constitutes a contract. What was the content of the contract? It did not say amulet, it said hole clamp. We provided a mechanical hole clamp, not a hydraulic hole clamp. We operated in good faith, and that's all I'm trying to describe. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
We do appreciate the opportunity and wish you would consider and understand this point, because there's clearly beyond this, there's exposure in other arenas that I hope I've done a good job at describing to you this evening. Thank you very much.
We appreciate that. We obviously haven't taken this lightly, given the amount of time that we've deliberated.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments from council? Councilmember Barb?
I would just like to make one comment, as I believe that Chuck had said that he had taken both sales representatives from both of these companies, or in fact, I'd like for him to come up and state that, so I don't say something wrong, that they had taken them out and shown them exactly what we were looking for.
Both of the vendors that bid on this machine had the opportunity to see the hole clamp that we own on the John Deere backhoe that we have today, and they, in my opinion, understood that that is the kind of device that we wanted on the new machine that we ordered.
So you just said that there was a hole clamp on a John Deere?
Correct.
He was saying there wasn't any on the John Deere?
There is on the one that we currently own, yes.
Okay. So since we had a John Deere and it had a hole clamp on it, and we said we want another one like this?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out.
We're, I think we're kind of to the end of all this, I mean...
I was the sales guy following the transaction. Chuck did mention the backhoe, I did go by it, I didn't go by Chuck's, that did occur and we realized that what I did was not what they had planned. I appreciate the kind of specific intent. I wish I had known that, I wish I would, I'm sure enough to have asked questions, it just, about what's written on this paper, challenging all any input and supplier or manufacturer, asking what a mechanical hole clamp is, and I found anybody capable of trying to furnish it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I was just going to ask, and any of the three gentlemen can answer this, when we say, how are we spelling this hole clamp? Do you have that in front of you?
HOE hyphen CLAM.
HOE hyphen CLAM. At any rate, is that a trademark name, or is that, is there another name for the piece of equipment that we're talking about, or is... Was, what I'm, I guess what I'm asking you is, hole clamp, is that a generic name or is that a brand name? Glad to see Mr. Hendricks pass me that down. I think it says hole clamp's got a TM up in the right corner of it, which is great.
It's patented.
Right. Can he come up to the desk, Nancy?
Can you go ahead and come up here?
Yeah, if you would, yeah. I thought it was going to be a quick comment.
I didn't hear anything you said. I apologize, that's why I didn't...
But I did meet with Ricky, which is the operator, and we did talk about the clamp, but this was about eight months ago, and I did not remember anything product-specific, brand-specific. Eight months, you know, I'm forty-eight years old, and I certainly hope I'm not bound to that, you know? Normally, when something's specked out this generic, when they have something specific in mind, they usually don't use generic terms. You know, they make specific statements on the bid proposal or on the specification. This is very generic, and I felt like I was bidding this exactly what they wanted.
Go ahead, two different, there's a 410E and 410EL.
IT.
IT. What's the difference in those two pieces of equipment?
Well, just the one has a coupler on the front of it.
One has a coupler and one doesn't?
Right, on the front, where you can use different attachments on the front.
All right, and we approved the purchase order for this December the...
Fourteenth.
Order seven or four?
Fifteenth.
You authorized the award. December the...
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth. Okay. And when is this piece of equipment supposed to arrive?
It's shipping on the fourteenth.
Okay. Is that just, is that pretty well in line when you're special order something? I think Jeff had said it was a very unique...
Chuck and I, I told Chuck that we were going to try to make delivery by the end of January. The holdup was going to be the front coupler that goes on the front of it. Now, they have cut the material to make the front coupler, but I've asked them to put it on whole for the time being while this matter's getting discussed.
If you take the front coupler off, what makes this a special order item? Is it the four-wheel drive?
It's the fact that it has a cab to start with, air conditioner. It's not what contractors use. They don't like to pull the glass in the contractor's arena. It gets knocked out a lot, and they get tired of replacing it, to be quite honest with you. Their stuff is stored on a construction site, unlike here at the city where it's kept in a barn overnight in lots of cases. You don't have the vandalism exposure and so forth, so that's why it's not a contractor-friendly machine.
But is air conditioning?
Well, in some cases, you know, on bigger equipment, you know, with the contractors, they do have cabs with air conditioning.
Is this one air conditioned?
Yes, this one is air conditioned.
Okay, no further questions.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
That's it?
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Councilmember Henshaw, you?
Well, I guess it is a question to Chuck and to, I guess, Mr. Coke. Yeah. On your previous models, we do, you do have a hole clamp on the other models?
Yes, sir.
The other John Deere we have?
Right.
Who's the manufacturer of that clamp?
I have your website.
So the contention that we don't know who the manufacturer is, and we don't know about hole clamp, when other generations of the equipment has that specific piece of equipment on it, or that attachment to their equipment, we're all talking apples to apples. We should be talking apples to apples.
Well, the term hole clamp, or hole thumb, or whatever, is a generic term used in the industry. Now, this one manufacturer has chosen to market this product under that name, but they don't certainly have a patent on that generic term in the industry.
Sure. But your previous generations of equipment have this specific attachment on it?
That's not a piece of equipment I sold to them. I mean, that's some effort...
With a lot of the machines.
Ten years ago, did you say? So I mean, I doubt anybody at our operation that was involved in that process.
Okay.
So I mean, to say that we should have known that, I mean, I think that was...
That's the other reason that having a piece of equipment that does all of the things that we need it to do is so important to Halton City, is the last backhoe that we had, the backhoe that we replaced last year and this year, the ten years old. If I intend to keep a backhoe that long, it needs to do everything that we need it to do.
I have a great appreciation for that. I don't doubt that whatsoever. I just, I wish we would have got some specifics on this piece of paper, which I was bound to, you know, bid this thing off of. I mean, I can have a meeting with the operator, and he might say, hey, I want a stereo on my backhoe or whatever, but when it comes time to write the specifications and it's not on there, I'm certainly not going to bid a backhoe with stereo. So I'm pretty much bound to bid what I see in writing on the specifications, and I hope y'all have appreciation for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Ombi?
Yeah, a quick question. Again, I'm trying to get the series of events correct. Okay, the day we approved it, were you called over to look at the serial numbers and look at the hole before or after?
No, sir. Actually, during the ordering process, I'd actually already placed an order with one manufacturer of a thumb, clamp, whatever you want to call it, those are generic terms on the street for a mechanical type clamp. And the manufacturer called me back, our bucket is kind of unique to the industry in that it has a little bit of curve on the side plates, and therefore, if you're going to put a clamp, attach a clamp on the top of it, it's going to create a little bit more space than what it would on somebody with a straight bucket.
And so Chuck, you called Chuck and told him, I need to let you know about the bucket and have a little bit more curve.
Right, well, actually, I went over to talk to the operator, be sure, I said, Ricky, I just want to be sure that we're not creating too much space for you, I'm not sure exactly what you're handling. I'm just over there trying to satisfy, you know, their needs.
And is that when you said, well, let me show you what it looks like, or you got a chance to look at it?
That is when Ricky said, now, let's go back here, and let's wipe the nameplate off, here's what we really want. And if there was ever a discussion prior to that amulet, that is the first time I ever heard the word amulet, to be quite honest with you.
Does that pretty well concur?
I wasn't in the shop the day that you came out and met, and were talking about the gap between the bucket and the thumb.
Right, right. And at that point in time, he saw that the product had a stiff arm on it, and he said, no, that's not what we had in mind.
And this was after the order had already been awarded, what, a week before, two weeks?
Exactly, we had already ordered the tractor, and matter of fact, I'd already ordered the thumb. And at that point in time, the manufacturer raised a little bit of concern, he said, we had one user of this clamp on this bucket, and I would like for you to go check with your customer. And at that point in time, that's when we realized we had a problem.